Michael, I'm going to see if I can get it. The bike was to you or someone?
I'm not that way.
It's perpetual, David. You don't have a special.
David and Dwight.
I thought he would never be here. At least this week.
I was thinking about it, Jeff.
About you, Lois.
No, it would be, yeah. Yeah. I know. Why didn't he have?
We talked about our sauce and saved it.
So.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September 10th City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Camden.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Mahavik.
Here.
Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Mayor Jeff.
Here. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on the agenda is a public comment. Anyone willing to speak to the council as it pertains to consent agenda items unrelated to the agenda that's on the agenda this evening. Any action items, you'll have that time to publicly speak and we'll give you that opportunity. And also the public comment for the discussion item of impact fees. So you'll have that time, be able to speak on behalf of that item. So at this time, I'm going to open up for public comment. Steve from Prairieland, who would like to step up to the podium, state your name and address for public record question.
Thank you. My name is Steve Swinesberger. I'm with Prairieland Disposal. My address is 28019 West Main, Wakanda. And I'm here to address the City Council on behalf of Prairieland Disposal. We've been servicing your city for a year. And I'm here to give you some stats. There were some stats presented to you. And to answer it, I know there's a public comment, I can't answer questions, but you can get ahold of Public Works, they can get my cell if you have any questions or concerns. I just threw out there's some stats on recycling. The recycling percentage is very high for McHenry County. Throughout the whole county, it's about 28, 29 percent. You guys are 32, 33 percent. So recycling rates are high. I got e-scrap collections. The first e-scrap, we've done two already. We have another one coming up September 24th through the 28th for the e-scrap at the curb collection. And the first time we did it, we collected a little over nine ton. Second time we collected, it was 20 ton. So there's a big response in the collection of e-scrap at the curb. Another thing, we had the parade. It was a success with the parade. We did it the year before, it rained. It was still a fun time. And we have LEAFAC starting October 1st. LEAFAC starts October 1st. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, on the recycling. Recycling, what's happening, the commodities are in the gutter and they're not paying out as much. So, and we use the waste management facility in Gracely for all the recycling here. And what they're doing now, if there's 10 percent or more contamination in a load, the whole load gets trashed and we get charged for trash. So what we're doing is we're inspecting, doing onsite surveys. Driver opens it up, if you have garbage, if there's garbage in there, obvious garbage in there is going to get tagged. Plastic bags is considered one of them. I have some flyers that are going to be put out at the front desk here for the residents. And I'm just giving you a heads up what's going on with that. So people are saying, hey, I got tagged, oh, my data tag. It's because it was contaminated with things that are other than recyclables. So that's just a little heads up on what's going on with the recycling. And it's unfair for somebody, the truck holds about 300 homes with garbage recycling combined. It's a one-pass truck. It's unfair for the people that are doing a good job at it and then a couple of people throw in, you know, blue jeans, concrete, shingles, everything that's yard waste, everything that's non-recyclable and it contaminates the whole load and the whole load is trashed. So we're trying to keep it clean. Right now, everybody's really good because I find I get emails when they are contaminated. So everybody in the city is still, is doing a good job. So we're getting good clean loads out of the city right now. So if you have any questions, you can get ahold of Public Works, they have my contact information. And that's about all I have for you right now.
Hey Steve, can we put that flyer up on our social media and up on the website too?
Sure. Oh, sure, definitely.
Can you send that to me in a PDF?
Yes. Yes, I will. And that way you'll have it. I'll have the girls do it on tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great job, by the way.
Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Moving on to the presentation of Character Council Awards, we have Allison Cosse from Duker, Principal of Duker, and then Trista Vosberg presenting one award to, on behalf of Parkland. At this time, I asked Trista to come up first. You can come up and present the award to Mr. Jeff Blake.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you all for joining us. I'm very fortunate to get to present this award to a pretty dynamic man that I work with, so I'd expect you going to come up here and join me. This is Mr. Jeff Blake. He not only is a teacher at Parkland School, but he is also a community member. This is his hometown. He's a graduate of District 15 and District 156. And I'm going to put you guys on the spot. He's also raising a beautiful family here in McHenry in the back row there, so.
Yeah, go.
Yes. We should make him join us. He's actually an excellent candidate to receive this award because he is a good example of a representative of the pillars that you guys recognize. Mr. Blake, one day, was at a meeting and little did he know, he was going to go enjoy his lunch break and happened upon a pretty amazing adventure. So he took himself over to Happy Jack's proudly to get that fabulous sandwich that he was looking forward to because we know Mr. Blake enjoys lunch. And, you know, he went to his good hometown, Happy Jack's, to get it. And on his way back to tell the rest of his meetings, he happened upon what looked like someone in distress on the side of the road. And at that time, Mr. Blake made an assessment that there was a mom over there that needed some help. So he pulled over and fell upon one of our sixth graders at the time who was actually choking. And he performed the high leg, leg down a car, called 911 and saved a life. And she is now a seventh grader at Parkland. And I think she's pretty appreciative that you have such stellar character and that you were there at the time. And one of the funny things was is that Mr. Blake actually called the office and I happened to answer the phone and he was really concerned that we'd be worried he was going to be late. You know? So on behalf of the city of McHenry, I think you're a perfect, perfect person to receive this award.
Allison?
I'm also going to invite David Teeger, Mr. Delamora, to speak as well. This is David Egaton Bernabe. He was a fifth grader at Duker last year. And I'm going to let Mr. Delamora explain why we think David exemplifies what it means to have good character.
Well, I've met David since he was a third grader. He was in my classroom for third, fourth and fifth grade. He saw a student struggle for some time with anxiety to the point that he would miss some school days because he couldn't get a hold of himself. So his emotions were hard for him to control. Then one of the school breaks, he decided to take upon knitting and weaving different items with yarn. And then he discovered that it helped him overcome with his own anxiety problems. While using this as a personal way of therapy, David decided to do something good for the community and took upon the challenge of weaving hats for newborn babies. He took the initiative to come and ask me about a way to make a donation to a hospital. And that was when we decided to contact Centennial Hospital in McHenry and scheduled a donation with them on April 16, 2018. He has shown a tremendous amount of respect for others, caring and responsibility when taking this challenge. He feels very proud of himself for being able to help newborn babies and is planning on weaving more hats. So we at Duker, we are completely proud of him. We think that he's doing such a great job. He is able to control his emotions now. He's working towards controlling his anxiety too. It's a very good example of how we can overcome our emotions and become a better human beings and citizens of McHenry.
Congratulations to both Jeff and David. You don't have to, you don't have to feel obligated to stay here for a boring meeting if you'd like to go ahead. So Jeff's probably like, I'm out of here. Don't everybody get out now. Take care. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. 6A through 6J. I've got fixed ante, Alderman Santi pulling 6A. Is there any other items that council members would like to pull? At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve item 6B through 6J on the consent agenda. Alderman Santi, will make that motion. Second? Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Discussion on these items? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman McCann.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The item that was pulled by Alderman Santi was 6A. Motion to, for an ordinance amending the FY 1819 budget, increasing fund 510, Department 35, account 5370, in the amount of $14,000, $14,280 into waive bidding requirements and accept a proposal from McCann Industries Incorporated in the amount time to exceed $14,280 for the purpose of replacing a utility division backhoe engine. At this time, I'm looking for a motion. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion to approve that as presented.
Second? Alderman Mahavik?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Alderman Santi?
Explain why the waive of bidding for this?
It, you have to go through a case dealer to order this engine. And we, it was something that we had to order on kind of short notice. It was about three weeks ago. I did do some follow-up research for some other sources. We could have gotten some pricing from, from the case online parts store. The pricing was about $300 more. And then also, we followed up with another local case dealer outside of town and they were about $600 more. So that was research we did following up, putting in the order, but we, we did have to put the order in just for our own operations.
And it's my understanding when I read this, we're going to actually do the installation, correct?
That's correct.
Our staff? The product went down, the equipment went down on the first week of August? So?
Yes.
So if needed, could we, is there an option of rental for this type of equipment if needed between, I don't know, today and if you back to the fifth, I don't know if we've used a rental?
There is. We've done some preliminary research. A daily rental of this piece of equipment would be in the neighborhood of $500, a weekly would be in the neighborhood of $1,000.
And how often are we using it?
Some, with some regularity. It's, it's, we, it is the backhoe that we use when we respond to water main breaks.
Gotcha.
That's probably the biggest thing.
So that's 24/7?
Yeah. So it allows us to respond to emergencies, which water main races would be.
Okay. No, thank you. I appreciate the information, Troy. It's all I have.
Alderman Curry?
Yeah, just wondering, I was actually going to pull this as well. And for the very same reason that we've been in the habit lately, in the last couple of years anyway, of getting bids on four things. And this had no bids. And I know I brought this up last week to the city administrator. I assume you did some checking after that point in time? We did. Correct? We did. So, so these are phone quotes that you've gotten?
I've got some, I've got some photocopies actually of.
Well, no, no, I'm just, you don't have to hand it to me now. I'm just, but, but so you got a couple of phone quotes and they were both higher than this?
That's correct.
Correct. Okay. And I, you know, I certainly don't have a problem with those fixing our backhoe. I just would like to see us do the quotes in the future. And as Alderman Santi pointed out, it's, you know, it was three weeks ago, so we did have ample time to do that. So other than that, I guess I have no further comment.
Alderman Santi?
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate it because I, I mean, I had spoke on a couple cases in regards to this. And yeah, I'm concerned about waiving bids. I want to get the best price possible. Troy was able to go out and get a couple more numbers. I do appreciate that. And then the one thing that, that was brought up was this, you can, we can get a rental, but you can't get inside edge rental at 2:00 in the morning. That's the tough one. So, no, I thank you. I'm comfortable with this now. I appreciate it.
Any other discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Alderman McCannon.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The next item is discussion regarding residential impact fees. What I'll do is go ahead and start out with, Derek, would you like to go ahead and start?
Thank you, mayor. I'll just introduce this item briefly and for those of you new in the audience and those of us up here, provides just a brief background and why we're here and talking about this item tonight. So the focus is residential impact fees and, you know, it can be, as we're finding out day to day, a more convoluted process to identify exactly the type of fees we're talking about, the levels and everything else. But just to take a short step back in time, we as staff started looking at changes to residential impact fees, or it was at least on our radar this year. And we started some looking internally just to see what our neighbors were doing or, you know, where we were at fee-wise. And during that process, developer Dr. Horton came to us seeking amendments to their annexation agreement, which is basically a contract between the city and property owner for a project at Oaks and Irish Prairie to reduce fees by 50 percent. So basically, the short story is before staff could come to council with a, with an analysis and a recommendation for fee reductions, we're faced with, we're faced with a developer that's seeking a reduction of, a reduction of fees for a specific development in town. And I guess to carry that discussion one step further, the city has standard impact fees related to schools and fire and library and those type of things that we have on the books. And then we have fees that are negotiated as part of annexation agreements or were negotiated as part of annexation agreements when those agreements were put in place. In this case, many years ago. In fact, it's been, I've been here seven years and there hasn't been one annexation agreement that we've had, I don't think, since I've been here to negotiate. So obviously, it predates that time and most of them predate the housing downfall of 2007, 2008 in that range. And so, so we're faced with a kind of a dual issue of not having discussed the impact fees at a council level or had the chance to discuss the results of an analysis with the council. And yet, the council being asked to respond to a request from a developer for a specific project, the Oaks and Irish Prairie, on impact fee reductions. So that fast-forwarded or doubled our efforts, council or staff-wise, to gather information. We were able to come to council a few weeks ago and have a preliminary discussion, kind of combined on impact fees as part of the request that Dr. Horton has as part of the Oaks and Irish Prairie project. The topic went to the Community Development Committee for discussion and came out of there with a recommendation of a 50 percent reduction in fees. But as staff, we wanted to look at it even further to make sure that from a staff standpoint, that we could gather as much information as possible for ourselves and for council to be able to make an informed decision about both reducing impact fees across the board or from our standard impact fees from a municipal standpoint in anticipation of being able then to respond to Dr. Horton's request for a reduction of fees. And we know that there's also another developer that's already made a request on Legend Wigs for a reduction of fees at that, for that project. And there's others out there also that we would anticipate that request coming from. So really, the item was put on tonight. We were able to do, we as staff were able to do some additional research from a couple of weeks ago. We conveyed some of that information to council and supplement tonight, but there's still more information that we were gathering. The mayor has reached out to village presidents and mayors in McHenry County to find out from an elected official standpoint, what their, what their thought process has been and considering fee reductions in their municipalities. We reached out as staff, between Director Polarecki, reaching out to community development directors or his counterparts in other municipalities. And I've reached out to other village administrators, city managers, et cetera, of other municipalities here in the county. And that information's coming in. I just got an email as I was sitting down here from an administrator with additional information. So, so it's coming in even as we speak in terms of conducting an analysis and being able to convey that information to council. There's actually two topics on tonight regarding impact fees. The first one is this item, which is a discussion item for council that was put on here to, for a couple of reasons, to convey that additional information that we've been able to gather since the last time we discussed it, to convey the discussion from the Community Development Committee that was had and their recommendation. But really, to outline for council, and we did so in a couple of paragraphs in the supplement, those other items that we're, that we're gathering information on, like from other communities, like taking a look at the capacity of our water and sewer systems to make sure that reductions, the capo fees make sense. Gathering that information again so that we can put it all together for council to be able to consider as one package instead of dribbling in over time. And really, to get some feedback from council that the direction that we're heading staff-wise is the type of information that you're looking for from a, as a, from a council standpoint. So then when we come back with the recommendation, that we're be able to hit on all the points that the council wants us to either gather information on or at least address, address from a staff informational standpoint. So that's really the purpose of the discussion item tonight. Again, we welcome any input from council in terms of the direction that we're headed. And our goal would be then to be able to bring back to council a more, more analysis conducted on a recommendation for a reduction of fees that's backed up with, with the information that we're able to glean from other communities and ourselves through our capacity analysis and those types of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. At this time, I'll open up for discussion by council. And then I'll open up to the public and I'll go back to council. So at this time, I'll open up for discussion by council. Alderman Curry?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I'm sure you're more filled for that summary. So the information that you're preparing will include, for example, will it include, I guess I should ask this question, how these were arrived at in the first place so that we sort of know? Do we, did we know that or get that information?
We will try.
Okay. All right.
Yes, as much as we can.
I guess, you know, the kind of the basic things that we've been looking around, I would certainly be looking for would be, you know, we've talked some, about what some other communities are doing in terms of looking at reducing some of their fees. And we've talked in terms of percentages that I would certainly want to be, if we're, if we're in competition with other communities, I would certainly want to look at what the dollar value difference is. And of course, then I guess our own minds, we could compare that with, how does that compare with the services that McHenry provides versus that other community? And that's sort of a judgment call. And then, and then finally, I guess some sort of evaluation, I assume this is part of it, is, is, you know, covering the, as best we can determine, covering our actual impacts. So, you know, if we have development, there is an impact. Otherwise, we wouldn't have an impact fee. And what is that, you know, what is that effect on our systems, in other words? I assume that's how they were arrived. First, we may not be able to go back and find that, but I assume that's how they were arrived at in the first place. It could be wrong.
Yeah, I mean, if I can respond just quickly. A lot of, you know, I mean, I was certainly involved in annexation negotiations in my previous community that I worked for, and I'm sure have in the same way here in McHenry also. You know, there's a, and Mike Hook and Smorin can add to this also if he feels the need to do so, but, you know, land value played a lot into how impact fees were derived, where you establish the value of a parcel of land and there's calculations within the municipal code based on that. But then the other part of it is, right, how many, what's this, what are these homes going to generate in terms of capacity needed specific to the city for water and sewer? Where were our systems at at the time and what would need to be done to ensure that there was sufficient capacity for those systems if all those homes were built out over a set period of time? And then, I think I mentioned at the last meeting also, just to be blunt, to an extent, some, a lot of those fees were just simply negotiated, where you might have had the, you know, the facts and the figures, but it came down to sitting across the table and seeing what, you know, you could, us, as I mean, from a municipal standpoint, what we could get out of developers at the time in terms of fees. So all of those and probably others played, played into how those were established. But as, as well as we can for agreements that go back 10 to 15 years, we'll try to provide you with how those fees were established in the first place.
Thank you.
And I think that, Alderman Curry, you can probably come close to determining how this was based, based on, I'm sure what the city followed several years ago was the Naperville formula. Impact fees were the subject of a lot of litigation, including class action against McHenry County several years ago. And what the courts arrived at was, starting from the viewpoint that the only fees or exactions that municipalities could extract from developers had to be specifically, uniquely attributable to that subdivision. So there are three components of that Naperville formula. First, how much land that the city determined would be necessary for a school site, high school, grade school, and so on. From that, you multiply it again. From that, you multiply against what the anticipated number of children were from that development. And even though parties have argued about how many kids there are from developments, it seemed like there was consensus, but with by municipalities, um, as well as developers' attorneys, that the school tables the municipalities typically relied on more than several years ago were pretty accurate overall in terms of how many children were produced for a single-family neighborhood, three bedrooms, two bedrooms, five bedrooms. And that was another variation of the impact fee was how many bedrooms for that kind of structure. The last component was based on what the land value was. And a municipality could determine that we're going to base it on vacant land, but in an effort to offset the impact in the school district, the perception that this wasn't quite enough, there was typically a move toward using land which was improved with sewer and water. And that's how you arrived at some of the higher acreage fees. And as, uh, Mr. Morfield pointed out, that may arrive at one number, but with the benefit of any annexation agreement, the city may, uh, with the developer's agreement consent, impose a higher number, given the number of children going into the school district and the perception that the school district needed more help, more financial revenue. Um, was that the best formula? Maybe not. Was it the only logical formula? Maybe not. But given that this is what the courts blessed as an appropriate formula, I think what you're going to find is that the city's formula hews pretty closely to it. Because you just didn't want to go too far outside the lines. There were municipalities that were, they would say, we want a impact fee based on the square footage of the house. Not appropriate. Um, there were other, uh, alternatives that they arrived at, but that was never our recommendation when we represented the city when it was first put in place, to avoid the class actions, to avoid the suits. We wanted the city to adhere to the Naperville formula, which could always be adjusted depending upon whether there was any annexation agreement. But I think that's what you're going to find, that it adheres to pretty closely.
Was that treated then more as a cap? In other words, it was a, you could, you could charge, a municipality could charge less but not more. Is that one of the formal terms?
Correct. Unless there was the exception of the annexation agreement.
Right.
Which gave the city more freedom, more latitude to, with the agreement of the developer subdivider to get a higher fee.
But in those contracts, we don't have an impact fee. We have a developer donation fee. And it was written that way because of the, what you talked about with litigation with impact fees and everything else. And if your offices that had suggested and had added language in as far as developer donation fees. And if you look at most of the annexations done in the last twenty plus years, that's how it was written.
Sure. And the litigation that we've come across, as you can imagine, they picked on the municipalities, they picked on the units of local government that didn't have the benefits of an annexation agreement, however phrased, whether it was a developer donation or school impact fee. And that's why the developers went after McHenry County, which doesn't have the benefit of an annexation agreement, rather than municipalities that had it as part of a contract that developer subdividers were excluded from challenging.
Alderman Curry?
Um, I received a couple of emails and some calls regarding this too. And the one thing I just wanted to have you address or, or someone address that, um, the, the, the public seems to think that the fees are related to, um, the fees caused the fact that the properties were not developed, which, um, I don't think is personally the case. Over the last ten years, the properties weren't developed just because of the fees. Um, and that has in turn then, uh, in their opinion, reduced their property values. So can you address that? The point, the point they were making was that the subdivision in question did not get thoroughly developed because of the impact fees being where they're at. And the fact their property values have decreased because there's, the development didn't complete itself either. But I, I don't think that's thorough, truly the case.
Yeah, I just looked at Ross and then his answer would be the same. I don't know that we would have facts to go one way or the other with that. I mean, you should, could you use that as a reason potentially? Yes, can I, can I prove that to you? No, I can't prove it to you.
Because I, I think in the last year, property values have actually increased in the city of McHenry. So, um, without development. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Alderman County?
A couple of things I just wanted to point out. Um, and most of this we had, um, talked about during the discussion from, um, the Community Development Committee, but, um, I think that impact fees, developer donations, the reality is that whenever you're getting to those, I don't think you can ever get an actual cost. It's going to be an assumption because, um, we don't, we, you know, you could have a four-bedroom house and have two people live there. You could have a four-bedroom house and six people live there. You don't know the true value, okay? So, um, there's a lot of assumptions that go into it. The actual impact onto the roads, et cetera, we're, we don't know. Um, the actual cost of what the water, uh, impact on the water and the sewer, the, again, there are assumptions, they're not a hundred percent. Um, so we have to go on guestimates. Um, and I guess comparing that with the, um, value is, if we proceed and reduce the impact fees by fifty percent, which is what we're, what we proposed, um, at least coming out of the committee, um, I think the value is huge. First of all, what sold me, uh, would I be okay with reducing it fifty percent forever? Absolutely not. I, I wouldn't. Um, I think we do need to reevaluate what our fees are going to actually be, what they're, what we are going to set our fees at. Um, are they going to be what they were years ago when we had development? Probably not. However, um, we're suggesting fifty percent for two years. And, and that's what sold me on being able to be supportive of this because there's such a value to our community to get these developers in and spearhead some development, which we have not had in a decade or so. Um, you've got the subdivisions coming to completion and there's certainly, I have certainly gotten, and these aren't subdivisions that even in my work, from people in those subdivisions saying, please help us get this, um, the subdivision. It's, it's a quality of life, uh, to get it to, to, um, completion. You have impact on our stores, our restaurants, generating revenue, um, with more people in those subdivisions. So, um, the value to us reducing those fees, you know, are we going to take a hit on some of the utilities, usages on the utilities? Very possibly. But I, I, I challenge all of us to consider also the value that we're going to be getting in that two-year period. Um, you know, I, I am not a financial person. I, I look toward Alderman Curry often, uh, for his expertise in budgeting. That's not, that's not, um, a quality that I, um, have an expertise in. Um, but I do like to think of myself as a visionary. And I have a vision for our community that it continues to grow. Our downtown is, is really starting to thrive and become established and, um, I would like us to see some of these developments that started years ago come to fruition and completion, or at least work in that direction. So, um, I, I really challenge all of us to not only look at the financial numbers, those are important, I'm not saying that they aren't, but to also consider the other quality of the impact that we're going to get, um, for the value of the, the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion by council? Alderman Brad?
Yeah. Uh, I want to discuss a little bit about, uh, some of the fees that, uh, we're talking. And again, I had asked for it to be discussed at Community Development and it came back with no recommendation of different percentages of different categories, uh, of different entities. Number one, as far as our water and sewer goes, years back, we can go back eighteen, twenty years ago, when the first, whatever time it was that we discussed, uh, closing up the central, moving everything down to the south, everything was planned out as far as expansion. And these facilities were expanded for the future, for development of homes that we're talking about right now. I mean, this was planned out eighteen, eighteen, twenty years ago or more. And the thing is, is these fees were set at that time to help pay for upfront, for the investment that the city made as far as expanding these facilities. And I don't think it's to the best interest of the average resident in the city of McHenry to take and reduce those fees, especially when you take a look and what are we at? Forty-two dollars for debt service right now? And then we're going to take and relinquish some of that debt on, uh, as far as collecting with the impact fees? You know, I mean, that, that's a hit to our, our community, to, to our residents in the city. We were elected by the residents of the city of McHenry to do the best that we can for the residents of the city of McHenry. And if you take a look at the parks. Now, as far as the school impact fees, where are we as, as far as what our neighbors that we are supposedly in competition with, what are they charging? You know, traditionally, the city of McHenry has always been very lucrative to the schools as far as pulling whatever they could for impact fees over the years. And you looked at a lot of other communities that weren't paying that. Now, I take a look at what's going to be a big hit to the city is, um, the Teakin property out there past Martin Woods. And I had asked Director Martin today, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Morfield yesterday, Director Morfield, to, um, uh, look into that because that's one of our biggest competitions. That's what's going to hit the schools more than anything else. And I don't think, they were more worried about dredging winter lake than they were about collecting school fees. I don't think there, there's that big a impact fees out there. And the way I look at it is, is are we the ones that always have to take the hit? Because any of these impact fees that you relinquished, whether it's tonight or whatever, uh, yes, a lot of, of you say that, well, this is to spur development and in the long run. But what you're basically saying is, is that the residents of the city are the ones that are going to be, their dollars are what's investing by not collecting these impact fees into our future. So it's an indirect hit to our taxpayers of the residents of the city. And if we take and relinquish more of, uh, the other taxing bodies that encompass a, a heck of a lot more than the, the city, um, borders, then there's less of a hit to our residents. And that's what we should be looking at. And, and I, granted, I, I don't want to be, uh, to where we don't support our schools, uh, but the schools also have always needed to be, um, supported by their entire school districts and not just the city of McHenry all the time coming to bat. You know, the school lag fees, that was the city of McHenry. Uh, I don't think any of the other communities within that district collect that, that lag fee. You know, and I just want it to be the best for the residents of the city of McHenry. Fifty percent, I'll never vote for fifty percent. That I can tell you right now. And I will not vote for it and will not support any reduction whatsoever if we're talking about reducing the, the water and sewer rate, uh, impact fees. That I don't think we should touch. You know, here we are, we're talking about reduction of half of our Parks and Recreation Fund, but yet we want, we want to, later on, and, uh, we're going to be discussing matching seventy thousand dollar donation with another seventy thousand dollars out of the developer donation. So, you know, and he, again, it might sound petty as far as Parks and Rec, but you know what? The city of McHenry has always provided the, uh, a good portion of, uh, Parks and Recreation to not just the city of McHenry, but to the entire area and, uh, the community. And you, you, if you look at years back, the big, the big push for so many years was the soccer federation. And what percentage was the city of McHenry? It was a percentage, but it was a huge percentage. But yet we supplied probably what, seventy percent of, uh, the soccer fields, if not more, for fifty or forty percent or forty-five percent, whatever it was as far as the kids that were actually residents of the city. So let's look at what, you know, I just can't see where we just slice everything straight across. We got to look at what makes sense and what makes, uh, the best benefits for the residents in the city of McHenry.
Alderman County?
Um, first of all, I, I apologize, Alderman Brad, but I did not recall you saying that you were looking for, um, uh, from the Community Development Committee, a just, discussion on, um, each impact. So I, I didn't recall that and that wasn't presented to us in the committee. So I apologize if, if that was the case. That said though, um, while I can appreciate the fact that fifty percent is huge, but fifty percent is better than nothing and that's what we will get, that, that property will sit vacant, that developers told us, and, and that's not why. I'm, I'm not kowtowing to a developer, but the reality is that that property has sat for a very long time. And we have, and I look at it as an opportunity to get half of the money, which is better than nothing, um, if we proceed for two years. It's limited to two years, again. And half is better than nothing. That's the, that's a reality. Um, and while I had requested from staff, and I, I thought it was important to see what our neighboring communities were doing, and I, I always think it's good to take a look at that. However, I also don't think that that is my sole basis. It's just something, it's just part of the information I want to look at when I make a decision. Because the reality is, the bottom line is, I'm going to do what's right for our community. It's good to know what other communities are doing, but I want to know what's best for McHenry. And what I believe, my, what I believe is best for this community right now is, yes, to go ahead and get this develop, at least for two years, a couple of developments, um, going that have sat partially empty and get things revitalized. I said this before, we have done, um, with businesses, we've gone forward and offered incentives for bigger developments in the community. That's what I consider this to be, an incentive package. Now, it's just a term, but we've offered reductions in pricing, if you will, at other times to get, to, to jumpstart development. That's what we're doing. I think that's important. And, um, while I can appreciate, I, and am I concerned? Sure. But I think for a two-year period, if we can get this going, not just, I'm, again, it's not any specific developer, but if for two years, developers know that they can come in here and get some development and we, we can especially get some, um, areas that have sat empty, if we can get them to completion, we're gaining fifty percent more than nothing. And that's what we're going to have, I think. Again, it's still a guessing game, but pretty sure that at least one developer's not going to, that is going to walk away. Fifty percent is better than nothing.
Any other discussion by council? At this time I'll open up for public comment. Uh, if you, uh, anyone that would start, want to start? John, come to the podium, state your name and address for public record, please.
Hi, I'm John Reiner. I, uh, live in Crystal Lake on Riverside Drive. And I'm also on the McHenry County Board. I could talk about this for hours. I, I've lived in development my whole life since I was in my young twenties. I was a real estate guy and built homes in the eighties. And I think the spirit of the impact fees or the land donations was, um, because the house would close in the middle of a year. was because the house would close in the middle of a year and wouldn't become on the tax books in the middle of the, till the middle of the next year. And this was when we were building in the county hundreds of homes. Currently, we're building dozens of homes. I think we had twenty last year in the county. So we totally eliminated the school land donations in the county for two years. And we're going to redo it on the UDO for future. And I think what we'll do is we'll watch for future development. If a big subdivision comes in that would impact the need to build a school and get more land for the schools. Right now, the REO Leslie Shermerhorn did a study for us, too. And throughout the county, the McHenry County schools were down, I think it was twelve percent. There were fifty-five thousand students in McHenry County schools. They're down to forty-eight thousand from the peak. I think you guys will see maybe a market penetration of twenty homes. And this is just to recoup that first unpaid year until the schools' taxes are up and rolling. So, you know, currently, the six collar counties of the Chicagoland area, we are the weakest in the housing recovery, the weakest. Here in the city, you guys are poised to assist the local county, or the locals and, and all of McHenry County to grow the tax base, the, the tax basin with this action. Personally, I strongly believe this is a win-win. You guys will be following a trend that we sees an action that will appreciate positive growth results throughout our whole region. There are builders around the area. I don't want to personally name any of them. A lot of them are just coming up north of the border. That, that, we don't have Foxconn, we don't have an interstate. There is no Calvary coming to help us in our recovery. We have to help ourselves. Impacts are just a tad more than a money grab that were used in an unstoppable housing economy. We thought it was an unstoppable housing economy. But the cost of housing, a permit fee throughout a lot of these municipalities, anywhere from twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars before they, they dig a hole in the ground. I know that Harvard eliminated their fees. Lakewood eliminated their water and sewer fees for like eighteen months to get theirs going. And it did work. You know, I don't know what's best for the city of McHenry with your water and sewer. I think, Mr. Clapp, that's, that's an interesting argument. And, and I certainly couldn't argue, you know, against it. Because it's a feeling. And, and you know, if someone feels it, he's not going to change it. But the, the, the school impacts, you guys are at a, I think, a four percent reduction in population. And I don't think that's going to change. So I know that throughout the county, we have something like a six to ten-year inventory on developed land that has been paying taxes into the school districts for all of these years. They're unused and they're ready to go. So I personally hope that you all do it. And I, I think that you'll be helping, helping yourselves and, and everybody in McHenry County. Thanks. And I know this isn't easy for all of you. It's a thankless job. I, I can tell you from experience. Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Connor Brown, Government Affairs Director for Heartland Realty Organization in Crystal Lake. I'm here with Sue Miller. She is a past president of Heartland Realty Organization. She's also the incoming Secretary Treasurer for the Illinois Realtors, for a forty-seven thousand member association statewide. I want to thank all of you for taking a hard look at this. I know sometimes it's easy to look past issues like impact fees, especially when half the room clears out. It's just really not a very exciting topic. But as we're finding out, one more community is starting to dust off their impact fees schedules as they're looking at land values, as they're looking at population trends. I can, I can tell you right now, I looked at some of the numbers for District 156. And they've been largely flat since two thousand and five. They've lost sixty students. District fifteen's enrollments dropped six and a half percent since two thousand and five. Part of the reason why we had impact fees, particularly during the high-growth areas, is to take on that, that additional burden that school districts would have and find a way to fund those capital needs. Even the city of McHenry, since last census, I looked it up this afternoon, the Census Bureau estimates that we're down point four percent. So just, just under a thousand residents. So if what we're asking for is basically a two-year experiment and adding, you know, as John mentioned, a couple dozen new homes, you know, what sort of impact are we, are we going to be looking at in terms of our overall infrastructure? I think it's a pretty easy experiment to do. Right now, this county is in an absolute dogfight for one demographic. I know it's been talked about quite a bit at the county board level. But the age group between twenty-five and forty-four years old, those are the people that are bringing, obviously, families, starting small businesses. We're, we're off eight percent since, since the last census. So it's very, very interesting when, when we see competition, whether it be across the border into Wisconsin or even within this county, what we're going to do in terms of fighting for those families. And I think when we start looking at issues in this real estate market, we're still having appraisal issues. This, this is a cost that, that it doesn't really get factored in. And when you have some of those challenges, yeah, we'd love to stick it to the developer. But the reality is, the developer just passes on to somebody who can finance it. And when it can't appraise out, that house doesn't get sold. So those are some of the things that, yeah, you're almost leaving money on the table. Because those are the people that build in the houses. They're employing the local folks, the carpenters, the real estate agents, yes, we'll even argue that selfishly. But, you know, these folks turn that money over into, into the economy multiple times. And so when you start looking at that in terms of not only employment dollars, but also tax dollars and how it's being spent here locally, that's quite significant. So we do support your efforts in just looking at this. I, I think it, it warrants it. It's been a long time. And it's, it's really something I think everybody should be doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Connor.
I'll take it from there. Most of you know me. I'm Sue Miller, from Cobblebanker, the Realtor Stick Group. And of course, I am in leadership with the Realtors. What you probably don't know about me is that in the late nineties and the early two thousands, I owned a company called Lakewood Quality Homes. And we built several homes here in McHenry. We left that business due to impact fees. We were a small builder. We built semi-custom homes. For the average builder, the average small builder, your end-of-the-day profit margin is between six and eight percent. And when you have eight percent, you've popped the champagne cork because you're really happy. John is also a small builder, so he can probably support that as well. When the housing market crashed, there was no room for those extra dollars, as Connor just talked about, being passed along. We made the business decision to leave building. As a Realtor, I will tell you, there are plenty of lots available in the city of McHenry that small builders would love to do custom or semi-custom homes on. It's not all about the big developers that are to come in and finish those. It's about the onesie-twosie lots that are out there they're not interested in. But someone like myself, someone like John, would certainly like to buy that lot, go to contract and build a beautiful home. But what those impact fees does is raises our cost to build. Because we do have to pass that through. And depending on the size of the home, you could be looking at ten to fifteen dollars a square foot just in fees. So this is an important incentive for a limited time to get some of those infill lots sold to private developers, private small builders like myself and John, and take advantage of the fact that they're here, they exist, and need to put more members into our community. So please consider this, it's important. And it's not only about the big developments, it's about filling in some of those for-sale lots. Each of us can drive our neighborhoods and we see them. People mow the grass, but wouldn't it be nice if there were nice new homes there? And as a Realtor, there is a pent-up demand for new construction. We haven't had enough to sell. People would love to buy new construction. They want to design their own homes. We are selling old houses. Let's build some new ones.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else that would like to make a public comment, sir? Please state your name for public record.
Brian Wilson. I live at seventeen thirteen Dundalk, which you might recognize as being in the development. So I appreciate that you guys are looking at our development and considering helping it be developed. I'm not really a public speaker, so.
Bear with me.
I'm with you. And I appreciate that you guys have kind of a thankless job. So thank you for your service and everything. But property values do increase from completed developments versus incomplete developments. And so I feel like while you would be giving up some money on paper by reducing the fee, you would be gaining revenue longer term because you'd be able to tax on a developed piece of land or multiple pieces of land, and also have increased property tax revenue from higher property values of the existing houses that are already there. I think that in general, the fees were kind of established in a different real estate market, like has been said. The industry I'm in, we work with a lot of developers, actually. And we're doing a lot of projects in other communities, whether it's, you know, Wakanda area, Mundaline area, you know, other communities that I think those residents could be enticed to build and develop and buy homes here. McHenry's become, in the last ten years that I've lived here, a really nice place to live. I mean, it used to be the downtown was pretty desolate and abandoned and, you know, there wasn't a lot going on. And I feel like you guys have really helped to improve what our city is. And if we had builders building here, we could get more people, more people in my age group that, you know, would raise families here and want to come here. And I think that can only be good for this city longer term. Yeah, that's pretty much all I got. That's all my notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next, is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment?
I was going to take my hour, but we didn't chat.
Sure.
My name is Bobby Vani. I live at fourteen oh one Draper. And I don't want to reiterate any of the excellent points that have been made tonight about reducing impact fees. But I am the president of the Legend Lakes Condo Association and have been the vice president of the Legend Lakes Single Family Townhome Association for years. And one of the things that really hasn't been brought up as we've talked about the impact to residents is when you live in a homeowners association, you pay homeowner dues. And when half of your development isn't finished, all of that burden lays on to the homes that were completed when they were actually designed to be spread out amongst nearly double the amount of homes that are there. I personally pay two homeowners association dues, one to the single-family home, the entire master association, for something like three hundred and fifty dollars a year, which would be drastically reduced if that community was completed. And I know Legend Lakes is going to be next on the agenda for consideration in reducing impact fees. And it actually makes a very positive impact to the residents in these communities when these communities are finished. Not only do we have to pull in our neighborhoods and look at empty lots that aren't maintained the way we maintain our other common properties or our personal properties, there's all kinds of messes all over these communities that we can do nothing about. In my community, I have a mountain of dirt that is never going to be dealt with until a builder chooses to come in and is incentivized to actually continue building, which in turn is going to raise taxes in the city. I understand we'll see a reduction in those impact fees. But all of the residents that live in this pretty large community are going to see the benefit of homeowner association dues when those budgeted items get spread out amongst the entire community and not become a burden to the people that bought first and then things stopped and everybody had to pay with what was supposed to be spread out over about another couple hundred, three hundred homes in those communities. So that was one of the only things I didn't hear brought up today. And I just wanted to mention that because when some of the other men are talking about the impact to residents, there's actually a very positive financial impact to the people that live in these undeveloped, uncompleted properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Anyone else like to make a public comment at this time?
Hi, my name is Peter Pye. I'm actually a principal of a company that owns seventy-nine lots in the Legend Lakes subdivision that was just spoken about. I did want to echo some of, some of the comments that were made in terms of the overall impact on the homeowners association when these communities get complete. For us, I think we've owned those seventy-nine lots since April two thousand and ten. And in that time, we paid about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the homeowners association. We don't pay the full dues, but it's a lot of money. We've also paid over a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the lot maintenance that we do to try and keep our lots mode as nice as we can for those residents. But at the same time, for all of the lots that we've owned, or still own, we've only paid about twelve thousand dollars in property taxes. So you don't need a fiscal impact analysis to know that, you know, seventy-nine lots times two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, if that's the average sales price, that's over twenty million dollars of assessed value that would be taxable. So the, just the revenue from the additional property tax created is, is significant. And in addition, we bought six other communities from Kimball Hill Homes when they went bankrupt back in two thousand and ten. Those six communities have all sold and/or are under contract and about to, about to close. Those are mostly in the western or southwest suburbs, and they are off of transportation corridors. Those communities had a lot of issues with bonded improvements, which fortunately, this subdivision didn't because probably people that were on this council back in two thousand and nine and ten realized that Kimball Hill was going to anger up and make sure that those streets and sidewalks were all completed. But the point is that for us, it hasn't been for lack of effort for us to try and sell these, these lots and get this community completed. It's, it's hard to get builders up here in Lake County for a lot of reasons. One, the competition was mentioned up in Wisconsin with lower property tax bases. Two, we're a little bit further away from a main transportation corridor. I can say that this is the first time in fifteen years in this business that I've ever spoken in favor of another developer or builder receiving impact fee reductions. Obviously, we would like to see that be successful and try and see the same. Because we do have a builder that's currently looking at these lots and we thought would be contingent on this, on this fee reduction. So just, you know, I wanted to point out some bigger picture property tax issues and also bigger picture impact on the people living in these communities. You mentioned these six other communities. We did, we did some studies, and it's hard, but just looking at communities where they were incomplete right next door to communities built at the same time roughly that were completed. And on average, it was between fifteen and twenty-five percent difference in terms of the resale values in incomplete communities versus the resale homes in completed communities. And right now, in Legend Lakes, you have seventy-nine lots that we own that don't have homes on them and will not have homes on them unless we get, unless we get this reduction. I can speak for the Avanti community and D.R. Horton. I'm sure they would do a great job completing the community. I'm sure that the same benefits would be seen with the Med community, both on the homeowners association side and the property tax side. So just want to bring up those points. Thank you for your time. Hopefully, this gets through.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any comments? Last chance. Go ahead and open it up for a council discussion one last time. Any, any council comments? All of them, glad?
Yeah. You know, you take a look at these subdivisions that are incomplete. And yes, you could feel sorry for the residents that live there to some extent. However, just like business and most people, when they bought houses years back, it was almost like a business because it was an investment to them and then they would work their way up. Traditionally, if you went back twenty years ago and beyond, people always bought in new subdivisions because of the fact that they got in on the ground floor. So their price would go up after several months, six months or a year, and maybe they would save five, six, ten thousand dollars on their purchase of their own, maybe sometimes more. In fact, I used to see that even back when I was a kid, when you see the new subdivisions going in closer towards the city. But it's a gamble. Now, did they get impacted by the economy and the slow, you know, slowing up of the housing market? Yes, but you know what? The whole community suffered. I mean, you go through the neighborhoods, and Ross will attest to how many complaints and how many lots we used to have to mow because of foreclosures and people that lost their homes and everything else. So, I mean, it wasn't just these two newer subdivisions that suffered. And the thing is, is, you know, I know we got a couple of emails, or at least I know I did, and, you know, we're the taxpayers. Well, yes, but again, if we relinquish and take fifty percent off of these impact fees, there could be an impact to all the residents that pay taxes and to spur the subdivisions. I can't take that into account. What I have to look at is what is fair as far as what an impact fee is and what is fair to the city of McHenry versus the entire area that we collect. And I also feel that we do need a couple more weeks for staff to get all this information to us and to analyze things a little bit more. Again, like I said, I can't support just taking, slashing all those fees down to fifty percent. And it's amazing how some feelings change over one meeting as far as fifty percent was a shock then and now it's, you know, to where we can accept that. We all want to see that the city prosper. I don't think anybody up here would want to see it. But again, at what cost? I'm not going to ask residents throughout the city to have to pay more for the city to flourish, not if they don't have to. That's all.
Thank you. Any other...
Look, I just wanted to...
You want to say something?
Yeah.
Director, follow me.
I mean, I don't want to step on anybody's toes. I just want to make a few points real quick, some things that have come up over the past couple of days. As far as comparing other communities with McHenry, and I'm basically just going to focus on capital development fees because I think that's where the stumble is here and where we're really, you know, trying to grasp. Is there going to be a negative effect on the city if we reduce capital development fees? Each community is different, so Crystal Lake, Cary, whatever it is, infrastructure is different. Those capital development fees are based on what their infrastructure is. So we have a wastewater treatment facility. We had two. We have one now. We have, obviously, water treatment facilities. You know, the fees that you look at in Crystal Lake are going to be different than the fees that you look at in McHenry because they have different facilities and different fees that cover different things. So looking at the actual numbers, I don't think, it's not a good way to compare. Second thing I want to say is, you know, annexation agreements when these communities came into the city of McHenry, and these fees were established, they were established with the idea that these subdivisions would be built out four or five years. But we're eighteen years later, in some, well, fourteen to eighteen years later. These capital development fees have increased one and a half to three percent over that eighteen-year period at a tune of seventy-four percent increase. So if you were to build a house in two thousand and four, you're paying seventy-four percent more capital development fees today than you were in two thousand and four. That's a big number. So again, additional information that I will supply to you, but, you know, if that subdivision would have been completed in a four-year timeframe as originally thought, we would be collecting a lot less fees than we're collecting today. So keep that in mind. As far as our infrastructure goes, just some quick numbers. Our wastewater plant and our water, the room is there for the three hundred and fifty lots that this is proposed to affect. So again, those will be numbers that I pass on, but we're well within the parameters of the IEPA regulations as far as what we can put into our facilities that we have now and what can be processed or what ways the water can be, the amount of water that's put out through our water plants. So again, information that I'll provide to you all, again, you know, I think that seventy-four percent number is a pretty large number, and I think that that should be taken into consideration, so.
Thank you, Ross. Paul McBrer?
Yeah, I've heard several different references of capital development fees. They are developer donations, and they don't necessarily for the schools have to be for building. Because the way our contracts are written, it's to the discretion of the city council and it can be used for, and they can be used for operational as well. So again, those operation fees, if they're cut, that's what we're cutting also. And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that that's not where I want to see the cuts. I'm just trying to, so that we get all the information proper and everything else. And again, with the sewer and water, those fees were figured in that they would be paid well in advance way back when, when we were looking at expanding the south waste treatment plant. And hey, our residents are taking a hit now with the debt service because of the fact that we don't have those homes built too. So, I mean, it's a double whammy, you know? I think we need to look at all that. And again, that's why I say I'm looking forward to seeing what staff is going to bring forward to us because I think there's still a lot of discussion after we see all the facts of where we're at.
Any other discussion? Paul McCurry?
Just a couple of comments, and I know that the people who spoke raised a lot of good points, some of which I think we're familiar with and some that maybe we didn't work considering or at least thinking about. I think the only thing that certainly from my standpoint that I'm asking for and that the staff is going to be bringing it forward is the information because everything else is guesswork. You know, we say, "Well, the fees are set in a different market, and they're not appropriate now." We don't know that because we don't even know what they were set back then, or at least we haven't seen that, nor how they arrived at where they are today. And I would also, with all due respect, say that it is fair to compare communities on these fees. And the reason it's fair, at least for me to do it, is because it was proposed to this body that one of the reasons we would consider doing this is that we are in competition with other communities. So if we're in competition and we're going to look at it that way, I didn't say that, others did, then we need to look at what the actual dollars are. That's the comparison that a builder's going to look at, right? The comparison anybody's going to look at is, how many thousand dollars does it cost me to build a home? And so regardless of what their capital fees are, their capital needs are versus our capital needs, it's still a fair comparison. I think more important than that is the answer as to whether the impact, the fees that are charged, whatever they are, I'm not against it. I'm looking to reduce them. I'm not. People may be assuming that I'm not at all. What I want to see is the basis for doing so rather than just a number, which is, here's what it is today, please reduce it fifty percent. That, to me, you need to look at... And I can even be willing to do that if you make a value proposition, which is, here's what we get for that, as some have said anecdotally, but here's what we get for that. You know, the one gentleman talked about the homes in Legend Lakes, and they're built, they're two hundred and seventy thousand dollar homes, and the revenue from the taxes, which is absolutely correct. Although we also have to look at, what's the city portion, at least from the city portion of that, what's the city portion of that revenue in that impact fee? And the fact that the city portion of that two hundred and seventy thousand dollar home is going to be somewhere around, guessing here, five hundred dollars. Okay, that's the city portion. So if I'm just looking at the city portion, and I want to look at value proposition, and yeah, I do look at things financially, I want to look at what is that impact fee that the city would get? Divide that by the five hundred dollars, and that's how many years the payback is, okay? If we're just looking at property taxes. And I know that there are other things that come into that. And I think there were a lot of good points. The one point I had never considered, I had gotten an email from Ms. Vani about the HOA fees. And that's a real impact on a resident. So, you know, it's something I had not considered. It's something that, you know, I don't know where the city falls in the responsibility for that, but it is certainly something that had not, never crossed my mind, to be honest. So those are, I guess, all I'm asking for, for me, is show me the numbers, and then I'll consider anything. And at some point, you know, it was said that some of this is guesswork. Yeah, it is. So is the neighbor bill formula, and I haven't even seen it, but I guarantee you it's guesswork. You know, it's all guesswork. I mean, to a certain extent, it is guesswork. You have to do the best you can at estimating the impact and what that costs. And again, my assumption may be erroneous, they was somewhere way back in our distant past that that was actually done. Maybe it wasn't. Maybe this was all just pluck a number out of the air. But if there was a basis for it, I'd like to know what that basis is before I just say fifty percent sounds like a good number. Sounds like a good number to the developer, I'm sure. I understand that. I understand that. But I have more responsibility than just that, and that's to determine what is that impact and what is the city is foregoing. And I agree that fifty percent, something is better than fifty percent of nothing. I agree with that statement too. When we are talking of three hundred and forty-four homes, we're talking about almost five billion dollars. That's equivalent to all of the property tax that the city collects for the entire community, all of it. So when we talk about this and people wonder, "Well, why don't you just do it?" It's an important question. Yeah, on the other hand, you can look at that the other way, which is, if we don't get any development in the city, if this is the one thing that causes that and we don't get any development, we are giving up five million dollars, four point six million for those who want to calculate it. So are we giving up four point six million, or if we don't do it? Or are we giving up four point six million if we do do it? So those are the things that I actually wrestle with when I talk about these questions. It's not just as simple as, let's just do it because a developer approached us. I want to look at what the numbers are. And maybe, once the numbers are in front of us and we've done our due diligence, then maybe it's like, you know, this is what it is, and we could be giving this up, and you know what? It's worth the risk. But I want to know what that is before I make that decision, at least for me personally. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other discussion by council?
So just to try to close it on our standpoint, so based on the information that we've conveyed to you in the supplement and the information that you've provided tonight, and I discussed, and Ross discussed, are we on the right track, at least in terms of the type of information we're gathering to convey to you for the next meeting? If anything else comes up, let us know, but we'll throw as much as we can possibly gather here over the next couple of weeks.
Ross?
So I just want to point out one other thing when it comes to the impact fees and how they're derived. You know, basically, you have to, every time you flush a toilet, there's a number on what that, whatever goes down the drain has an impact on your infrastructure, right? So there's companies out there that do full-blown studies on these fees. And, you know, for me to sit back here and tell you, give you a number on the impact on our facilities, I don't think I can do that. One of the reasons for that being is building codes have evolved over the years, and the efficiencies have evolved over the years. You know, so back in the day, as one developer said a couple of weeks ago, you flushed your toilet, you flushed five gallons of water down the toilet. There was a larger impact. Nowadays, building codes require one and a half gallon flush tanks. Okay, water-saving faucets now. You're not running as much water through the system there, or you're not putting it into our wastewater facilities. So twenty years ago, twenty-plus years ago, when these capital development fees, however they came up with them, if it was a study that was, I wasn't here, I was probably still in high school. Whenever they came up with those, I think you're going to find that there's a drastic difference in the impact that they have on our infrastructure now. You know, especially with that seventy-four percent increase over the last eighteen years. So yes, I agree that we need to look at it overall, and we need to analyze our fee structure. But I think that really going out and having somebody, some third party that's doing those types of things, do it for us, reestablish our fees, and then come up with a maintenance program to keep ourselves in check so we don't get to this point again, is something that needs to be done. But that's a long process, you know, and I'm not looking for a knee-jerk reaction here and to get a fifty percent reduction, but I really think that if we don't strike now, we're going to lose out on a lot of good residential development within the city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ross. Paul McBrer?
Yeah. Just to talk about infrastructure, and that's the fact that when you lay pipes down for our sewers and our water, and they're in the ground, if you don't, if you cut them off and you don't run any water through them, are you going to tell me that fifteen, eighteen years later, they're brand new? No, they're going to deteriorate being in the ground, whether you run water through them or not. In fact, actually, if you run water through them, it might help from something settling there without it. So, I mean, when you talk about infrastructure, we've had infrastructure in there that basically fifty homes have helped pay for that infrastructure. However, how many years later, fourteen, fifteen years later, now that they're going to get hooked up, if they get hooked up, that infrastructure isn't brand new? So if we're cutting the impact fees, it's almost a double loss because that infrastructure is already fifteen years old, and it's not brand-new stuff. So it's sitting there. And again, whether or not any water's gone through them or not, it's still deteriorating. So I think that's a factor that we've got to look at as well. I'll wait a minute there.
All right. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you to the staff and council for an extra discussion. Item eight D, we're going to, you know, later on, we're going to table that item and bring it into September twenty-fourth meeting. So I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that. So I'll move on with the item eight A, discussion to accept a proposal for the donation of funds for improvements to Walsh Park and to mend the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen nineteen budget, increasing Fund Two Eighty developer donations by seventy thousand to undertake improvements to Walsh Park. Phil, can you present the site, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is certainly a unique item that's been presented to myself and then subsequently to the Parks and Rec Committee. And I would say it's certainly outside the box of what we're typically used to seeing in a format for development. The city was approached by an anonymous donor who wishes to develop Walsh Park into the concept of an art park. And this was basically derived from some work that the Riverwalk Foundation had done with that concept, which was also included in the packet. The developer, or the donor, I should say, had partnered with a landscape design firm as well as an additional contractor for the replacement of the seawall with the concept of utilizing a design-build concept and saying, "All right, we're going to set a budget, and how can we get this done with this set budget and these pre-qualified contractors?" Again, as I said, it's not something that we're typically used to doing, and so even though I had a number of questions for him, and we worked through a lot of things, we brought that to the committee, and also had a number of questions at that level as well. Ultimately, we had that discussion and for the full council discussion because it is a concept that's outside what we're used to doing. The developer would ask for us to match that same $70,000, essentially paying for the seawall as well as paying for any prevailing wage costs that were outside of what the quotes that he had received from these two firms that he had partnered with. As Derek said, the money would be coming from the parks developer donations, which there is money to be able to do that. I would also add that this will allow us to get this done for a cheaper amount than we typically would see. I say that tongue-in-cheek because we didn't, we didn't put the plans together. We didn't bid it, so I can't tell you for sure. I can tell you that I've attached that same concept or that price point for what an art park would be of a similar design from Hitchcock Design Group who put that together. Those are the only number of numbers that I have to go off on this. I'll be happy to do my best to answer questions on behalf of the developer. I can't promise you that I'll have all those answers, but certainly want to present this concept as I think it is an interesting opportunity for us to develop that park.
Kind of as a side note to add on to that, one element of it obviously is the seawall. And I only wanted to state, state this as a release of the dredging part of it. Bill and I talked a lot about that, even outside of this potential development. And that seawall, if you haven't looked at it, take a look at it when you go by there next. That seawall has got to be replaced before the dredging is done in Boone Creek. Just, it's potentially, you know, the issues with it there, if they start doing dredging and pulling water out and messing around with it, we're afraid it may fail doing that. So, you know, even regardless of this replacement, that seawall, I think, is super important at that site.
Yeah, I would agree. And also lays the foundation for whatever else happens. You really need to, it does become, it just needs to be stabilized at that point, both from a shoreline point of view as well as any of the improvements that happen above that towards the theater property.
Thank you. Discussion ended. Alden McCurry?
Yeah, I think it's great that we've got somebody that wants to donate $70,000 to the city, McHenry, and do a project that, you know, that is the type of thing, I guess, is actually even more so, I guess, than when you look at another community where they painted the wall when you walked to the theater and that sort of thing, which presents itself well and it's good. The issue with, I have two issues with this. And one's an ethical issue for me. I think it should be for others, but the ethical issue is it's anonymous. And just as a politician, for example, cannot accept a donation above a certain amount. And while this is not technically illegal from what I can determine, although I defer to the lawyer, because I did do a little look-up on that. To me, it's the appearance, potentially, of quote-unquote pay-to-play. In other words, you know, and I'm not saying that's the case. I'm just saying that could be the appearance that, well, you know, I paid $70,000, so now I'm coming back to the city some, you know, a year later, or whatever, wanting some special variance or whatever, and it gets favorably looked upon. That's the concern with the non-transparent nature of this. And so I just have problems with the anonymous. I found a couple, I only found a couple of cases, but there were probably more where anonymous donations have been made to municipalities. One of them's right down here in Cary. It was a $60,000 donation that the trustees ended up voting for the very same reason, same reason, not to take. And the money that was, had to be given back by the village president. The other one was a community out in California where $50,000 was donated anonymously to improve an archery range. It was owned by the municipality. And the money was actually spent and the improvements were made. And then the press got involved in it and hammered on the municipality out in Fenite. And they finally ended up, I'm sure they talked to the donor, but they finally ended up divulging who the donor was. So it just, again, I'm not saying anything's happening. I just, it's just the anonymous nature of it is a problem for me. And then the secondary problem is that we're going to do work on city property without getting competitive bidding. I think everybody knows I'm big on competitive bidding. And I accept the fact that your feeling is that we're getting it done for a better price. I'm not discounting that, but it's just the idea that we get competitive bids on projects that we do. And we're going to be spending, if this passes, we're going to be spending $70,000 of the city's money. So those are my objections.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, comments? Alden McGlave?
Yeah, just the fact that it's no secret, it's been out there for years. Well, two years, probably, the fact that this was going to be the next leg of the Riverwalk. Is that what this is basically going to be? Is it an interconnection of the Riverwalk? I mean, or is there going to be more that's going to be needed to be done afterwards?
It's, I wouldn't consider it, you know, I guess I have the, I sit on the Riverwalk Foundation. And so even though the Riverwalk Foundation did include this park as a development option, that's not what this is to be viewed as. There's not, the Riverwalk Foundation is not contributing to the building of this. So they're not looking at it as additional leg. They are looking at it as an option, which I even stated in the supplement. They are looking at some option of an art park. And how does, if you're on the Riverwalk, it's one other thing that draws you down there. It's right in the center of that town that when you're on the Riverwalk and you look across the way and you have a mural that's maybe been painted on the side of the theater or there's a sculpture. It only enhances the visitors', you know, their experience while they are on the Riverwalk. And so they have discussed about programming it more than actually considering it an extension of the Riverwalk. Our discussions from Riverwalk Foundation have really centered upon the Fox River and extending from 120 Bridge, moving north there to as far as they can get with the money that they have in the bank. That's where they're at right now. And that's been their focus at this point, while they're trying to figure out how that will work or how can they get that done. So that's been their focus.
That was their focus, but there's also been contentions of doing this section. And I have no problems if they want to do this section. I mean, you know, all I'm getting at is I would rather see, if we're going to develop that park and we're going to fix this and fix that, just do the project completely and get it done, get it out of the way. You don't want to, you don't want to improve this in three years from now or five years from now and we're going to tear it up and finish off the Riverwalk. I mean, let's get a plan that you do it and you do it once. Why should we? It's just like, sometimes you see these roads, you know, they pave a road and the next thing you know, they're tearing it up and whitening it, you know, a year and a half later. I mean, let's do it once, let's plan it out, let's get it done and do it right the first time and be done with it.
I think, you know, that was the importance of redoing the seawall especially because that really creates the foundation for everything that happens above that. The only other thing that I think I also mentioned in the supplement was there was another private donation of a local restaurateur, you know, we all know that could be, that was interested possibly in putting in a cantilever boardwalk similar to, excuse me, similar to the Riverwalk Place Townhomes. Where you have, if you remember, when we first built that, we put the seawall in, we poured the concrete behind it, but we didn't put, it was probably two more years, three more years before we put the Riverwalk and the cantilever boardwalk on top of that. But it served as that foundation to be able to do that in the future. So that's the only other thing that's in play that is probably not included in this proposal. That and whatever happens on private property. Right on that back portion, that's still private property. The city does not own that whole bank, the whole embankment there. So anything that a developer might want to do on private property is not our concern at this point. I mean, obviously, it's something we'd want to work with them. But from setting the base, that's, the only thing that would be excluded from that full build-out in my eyes at this point would be that boardwalk, which is not included at this point.
Like I say, I would, I would rather see the whole thing done at once. I mean, if that's the goal of what we wanted over there, we should just do it. I mean, if we're going to do that project, we should just do the whole thing. But that's my opinion. I know others would rather to see the rest of the Riverwalk go forward, go in north and not worry about this. But this is an ultimate goal that you know is going to happen. And if you're going to work on the park, whether it's going to be three years, five years, or 15 years out, who knows? I hate to see something get done and then rip it up a couple of years later.
Right. And there would be nothing to be ripped up on this. The only thing you'd be doing is setting the foundation for maybe one potential future element and that being the boardwalk. That's the only thing. I think that, you know, again, coming back to the Riverwalk Foundation, their focus, yes, their focus has been to move north off the extension. But they also have some, I guess, responsibilities from some other donations that they have in terms of the historic bridge that they also, you know, have at some point need to probably work towards and that being the installation of the historic Pro Street Bridge that they have accepted.
What's that?
The one that's been nicknamed the Bridge to Go Nowhere.
Bridge to a parking lot.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alden? Oh, sorry. Alden McGlave?
Thank you. First of all, I believe that, if I remember correctly, in the committee meeting we addressed this, Attorney Carter said that there wasn't any legality to this. But I just, for confirmation, I would like to just have your opinion if there is any legal issue with us accepting that donation.
No.
Well, yeah, I guess we're accepting it, right? Are we accepting it or it's just part of it?
Well, it would be part of it. We would be signing the contract, so we would be accepting the donation.
Okay. So is there any legal issue with it?
No, there's not. There's no questions about, from a legal perspective alone, that's just what I'm speaking right now. There's no implication of pay-to-play or conflict of interest in the future. No. So if this isn't a legal dimension, I think the issues are what Alden McCurry are alluding to. Same issues that the village of Cary and the California municipality alluded to.
Okay. That said, I guess I find it interesting because if the person is anonymous, then how do you know that they're, would come back and ask for something?
That's why it's anonymous?
Well, that's, no, I'm just posing the question, no. Well, that's my point. You know, if it's anonymous, then they can't come and say, hey, well, I gave you this money and now I want this. Presumably, in theory. Anything's possible. That said, I did want to talk, just mention real quickly, too, about the developer, the parks money. I mean, there is money there for us to do and to utilize for our parks. So I guess in many ways I see this as a win-win, that we have some additional revenue from someone who sees this as important. We get a park that probably would not be developed because I don't think that the Riverwalk, in theory, is a cross from there and there isn't much of an intention, or I don't think any intention or discussion about doing anything with it on that side. So we have the ability to get a park revitalized and actually utilized. Now granted, with what has gone on with DC Cobs, you know, there's seeding out there. This would really enhance that a little bit more. It was interesting, shortly after we had a committee meeting on this, my husband and I were sitting outside there one evening. And we were sitting outside and I was looking out at the water and it was just like, there's no, it was dark, but there was no curb appeal, let's put it that way. There was nothing there. It really would have been aesthetically very nice to have, you know, some greenery, some artwork if that, you know, moves forward. I just think it would really enhance that atmosphere. I love the fact that our downtown is being revitalized. We heard someone earlier this evening talk about that, too. So of course, I would want to make sure that there's no legal issues. That said, I, I don't have a concern about ethics in this. And by the way, as a counselor, I've had to take a lot of ethic training, or ethics training. And really what it gets down to is your integrity, I believe, for each person. So one last point that was brought up was that seawall needs to be redone anyway. We're going to get it done and get a park revitalized at the same time. So I'm very supportive.
Thank you. Thank you. Alden McCurry?
Yes. Just to respond to one thing about, how would you know? Would, that's the point. So there are people in this room that do know who this donor is. And again, I think it's great, and I don't think there's anything going on. I'm not saying that at all. But there is, we have a public trust. Public trust, they're elected officials. And here we have elected officials who do not know what's going on, nor does the public. And, you know, let me paint, and again, it's, I don't believe any of this is. It's just the appearance. You know, it could be. So how does, so how would a person get any special treatment if we don't know? Here's how you do that. You go to the person on city staff who does know that you gave the donation and you arrange to get something before a council. They don't know that that's what happened. And you basically blindly vote for something that maybe had strings. Now, again, I'm not saying any of that. I don't believe that's even, probably possible. Well, it's possible, but that would be going on. Have trust in our people. It's just, it's an appearance thing. It's, at least for me, it's an ethical issue, as it was for at least two other municipalities. And while there aren't, and I said that when I opened, there aren't, I did not believe there's any legal issues around it. That's what I found, there are no legal issues. To me, it is. And also the other communities Russell with is the ethical issue of it. So that's why I made the statements again. I think that it shouldn't be anonymous.
Appearance? Alden Schaefer?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention a couple of things that came up at the committee level. The issue about the bidding process came up at the committee level, too. And quite a long discussion about that. And due to the fact that the way that this is presented from a donation and a planned design-build state is, we came to the consensus that it would be acceptable to bring forward to the council. So I just wanted everyone to know that there was a lot of discussion on that, too. There also was discussion about the anonymous donation and what effect that might have on the rest of the council. So I'm hoping to hear from others. But the one thing that I do want to get clarification on that Alden McGlave brought up was the one thing we did talk about was the Riverwalk on that side. I've been involved with the Riverwalk since the beginning. I don't recall anything on that side. What was it that was proposed over there?
But the only tie-in at all to the Riverwalk is the fact that the Riverwalk Foundation, as part of their identifying three different sites, and that being the historic bridge, the Bridge to the Parking Lot, the Miller Point parcel, and then Walsh Park. They had included Walsh Park in a design concept that was included in this plan. So the Riverwalk Foundation did include that plan. They see this more as a link to the parking as well as, again, augmentation of the experience through an option for an art park.
But there was no, again, just for clarification, there's nothing further to the west because that's all private property that was proposed for the Riverwalk. The Riverwalk was only going to be, or I mean, to the east,
To the east.
on that north side. Because the Riverwalk was always going to be on that south side of the...
South side of the creek.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I knew that. And then from the standpoint also of some of the discussion at the committee level, the, right now that you joke or, you know, we're facetiously talking about the Bridge to Nowhere. This right now is kind of the park to nowhere because there's not really good egress and ingress to that existing park, which is basically, I believe, two or three permanent picnic tables that are there today, right?
There's four tables there now.
Four tables?
Yes.
And that, again, just for clarification, too, that's not open to, or DC Cobs is not supposed to be going down there. supposed to be going down there with, with their patrons and beverages and things of that nature, correct?
That's correct. It's limited to the license agreement that's in place with them.
Okay. And the same, same would apply with this. It's, it's open to the public, it's not open and for private use of that facility, or the movie theater people, or anything like that.
Yeah, the one, but, again, the big, right now, as it stands, one of the things that we've lost with the license agreement is the connection to the Green Street sidewalk. So, reestablishing that connection to the Green Street sidewalk, back behind the theater, to the parking that we received through the River Place, um, agreement, that's just another connection to that, so provide a well-lit, uh, attractive area that people will stop and they can just hang out or have lunch or whatever in that area.
And the other, uh, couple of things, the, um, the maintenance of that after the fact that it would get redeveloped would be, uh, the cities, even though there is a small portion that is, uh, where this park would extend to, that is not city-owned property, but snow maintenance or, or yard maintenance would be taken care of by the city, because that's all their property.
Correct.
On their property, except for that area that is not. They would leave that to them.
Yeah, to the east, on the east end of the park, behind the theater, where that, where that empties out, there is a line there that, uh, any, any plantings hanging on that side of that, of that line, and then east of that line is private property and will be maintained privately.
It's basically off the corner of the, of the building.
Right.
The theater building.
You're missing the corner to the tree stump. That's the best way to describe it.
And that would continue a path to that parking lot that's back there, which doesn't exist today.
Correct.
So, there would be an entrance there to the whole downtown area from that parking lot, which we really don't have anywhere today. And finally, the other thing that I personally brought up at the committee level was, uh, was asking if the, what everyone would think if, if this was, if the anonymous donor or whoever would want to just buy that piece of property, take it on themselves, and it was, you can explain the staff's view on that, or were that...
Well, yeah, that was, that was initial, for our first meeting, that was what we came back with from the committee, is to go to them and see, were they interested in extending that license agreement, or were they interested in outright purchasing that property and creating just a private, you know, a private patio, I guess, more than anything. And that was not something that they were interested in doing. They really were, the goal was to create that art park that people then can traverse. It's, uh, it's become more of a popular concept and, uh, again, a portion of the Riverwalk Foundation is going to go down to Naperville this weekend to further explore the possibilities of what, you know, what that art park could be. So, they did not want, uh, they did not want to take that on privately, they wanted it to remain a park. And, and obviously, there's other, a whole lot of other things where, you know, that would get tied into that conversation, um, and I don't know if it was something that, that we'd be comfortable with as a city, but we did ask that, have that conversation to be able to try to vet as many questions as we could from the situation, that is, again, a fairly unique one.
And then finally, too, with the, with the, the companies and the contractors that they have, from a staff standpoint and from a, uh, multiple, uh, business owner standpoint, these are two very reputable companies that do great work around the county and the whole Chicagoland areas, from what I've been able to determine, correct?
Correct.
So, I had...
Any other discussion?
Alderman Santi?
Yeah, I definitely, the anonymous donor is definitely a concern with me, also the waiving of the, the bid process. I just want to know, how, how long ago did you receive this? And I think there was somewhere in the notes where, um, I don't know if it was in the, in the minutes or somewhere on the, on the estimates, where potentially a project like this would be somewhere over three hundred to three hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Three hundred and forty thousand dollars was the estimate from Hitchcock. That was that full build-out. And you can pull off some of that shoreline treatment that's not being done in this, but still, it's well above what this... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, so, but, it's, it's not an official bid, but, I mean, it's the same, I know it's coming from the same company.
I just, depending on the cost, depending on the probability of cost is really what it boils down to.
Okay, all right. Did the Riverwalk Foundation review this, or did they look at this? Any input from them?
From this supplement or this proposal?
This proposal.
No.
No.
We've had discussions about it, but, um, beyond that, no, there, again, their, their faction is just focused on that art side of it, and how, if this happens, how could they then enhance, uh, what is happening there?
Yeah. I, I, I know to a certain extent, it's not very little, but there's, you, you do see a little bit of activity in that area, uh, you know, due to DC Cops, but, you know, everything is legit, they're just, you know, people are just sitting out there, you know, just talking. I, uh, I noticed the concrete where City Administrator Moorefield mentioned that, uh, there's definitely some slabs of concrete that, that, I don't want to say slabs, but they just, they do need to be repaired and, and I, you know, I see that as a definite, thing for, you know, thing that should be done prior to dredging, but also that, you know, they could make that into more of an aesthetically pleasing, you know, area where you could physically dock a boat on that side also. I know that, that channel is definitely narrow. It's interesting trying to see people park across the channel right now. And then, we would maintain this, correct?
Correct.
Except for the...
Eastern portion.
Okay, because when I look at, if you take a look across the creek now, you look at that building, there's, there's areas like of the back of the theater, but it's facing south. Is that something that we maintain now, or is that, you know, is there like a portion that's...
Up, pretty much up to that theater wall, on that south-facing theater wall is ours.
Okay.
And yes, there is some things that we're talking with the owner of that property that have been stacked on our property.
Yeah, yeah, I see that, and growth, you know, overgrowth and things like that, I just wanted to know if we're, you know, if we can maintain it, yeah, let's move it, get the stuff moved and, and...
We've brought that to their attention to have that moved, yes.
And, and Hitchcock, um, we've worked with them before?
We have worked with Hitchcock. They did the initial master plan for the Riverwalk, they won the award for it.
Okay, yeah. And, and you bring me back to the Riverwalk, I mean, we, there's a perfect model out there in the lobby, and it shows the Riverwalk on the, uh...
South side.
Yeah, on the south side of the creek, and, and I know, you know, DC Cops came in, and, uh, you know, there is some use to that park. I know there's definitely a lot more expenses going on there, but, uh, you know, moving forward around Miller Point and, and heading north is, is definitely, uh, a number one issue in my book, because, uh, we told our community many, many years ago that we'd be taking us all the way north to the, uh, to the north side of Pearl Street, all the way up to...
Webber Park.
Yeah. Uh, that's all I have right now.
No, you know, I, I think it's important to note that if this wasn't before us, we probably wouldn't be talking a lot about Walsh Park, aside from maybe the seawall.
Yeah.
And that seawall does need to be replaced before we do dredging, uh, but beyond that, we, we wouldn't be putting a lot into that. And the seawall quote that I have, you know, attached is fifty-three thousand dollars. So, there is some additional cost to us, uh, but that, again, there would be a bidding process, with that process that would happen, well, let's just use that as an estimate or a ballpark figure to say, all right, our minimum investment into that park, if we do nothing else at all, and leave it with a big slab of square concrete and four kind of dilapidated benches right in the center of this, this area that has, you know, thousands of people from the theater, from, you know, DC Cops Restaurant, from our buddies that are revitalized, and you have, you know, the deli that's looking to proceed, the, the brand-new bridge that are, that's being completed there. It, it is that opportunity, but without this donation, we probably wouldn't be talking about this park to this level. I mean, quite honestly, I'll tell you that as Parks Director.
And just, just to follow up, um, one thing that Alderman Schaefer mentioned, which was a, you know, it is a good concept to this, where, you know, behind the theater, I mean, there's parking back there, so you do have, you know, you have vehicles back there, but you're gonna have to deal with that in a parking lot, but it, it, it would develop a, a walkway, and, you know, I don't know if we have enough to tell people, but there is that walkway, you know, in between the new business just north of the theater, heading down back into that parking lot, because I've, you know, I, I've just noticed from time to time on a, on a, on a busy Friday, Saturday night where, uh, across the street the parking lot is maybe eighty percent full, and, and I drive two blocks and I take a look at, you know, uh, court, behind, uh, the restaurants, uh, I don't know, the theater and the gambler, there's half a dozen cars in two lines. It just, it's pockets of money.
This is almost that southern connection back to Green Street. I, you know, I look at the northern connection to Green Street as Newman Park, when you look at that nice brick paving pathway and the Perilla, and a little bit, a little bit nicer feel, this is that same kind of connection back on the south side of Green Street to that parking that's in the rear.
One more, I just really wish this person would come forward. I mean, I'd love, love to recognize the person. It's all ahead.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I guess, again, the anonymity and, uh, the donor. I would say that there's no reason why the entire council wouldn't be emailed with that information if they feel comfortable later. I'm sure you guys aren't going to get a brown paper sack with fives, tens, and twenties and cash.
Just hundreds, just hundreds.
So, I mean, if somebody was that desperate to know, I mean, if they could pull a FOIA or whatever to, to get that information, uh, if somebody wants to remain anonymous, uh, you know, it shouldn't be that, that big of a deal, as long as we know everything's legit, you know? Basically, uh, I, I just think that, uh, we need to move forward on this, but I guess my other question, and I don't know if somebody had asked this already or not, but what do we have left in our parks?
In parks developer donations, we have roughly a million dollars.
We have roughly a million, and we're taking seventy thousand out. Do we have any other bigger projects coming up on the parks?
Well, we have the two, the two big washroom structures, now we have Fox Ridge, so that's gonna be probably two hundred and fifty thousand, and we have a redesign that's included of the Vets Park washroom structure, and then we have that slated as almost three hundred thousand, so those are two huge, I guess, two very large projects that we're taking on, that's this year.
But we're not draining out the funds.
No, yeah, even with, it still leaves us a base to be able to do some projects, but, you know, leads into the other discussion that we had earlier, I won't be in the bad though.
Go forward.
Alderman.
I think from a financial standpoint, too, two things to note, um, the park development donations can only be used on, on park-related ventures, so it's not, uh, it's not taking from the general fund, so to speak. And, uh, when you look at this, if we were going to repair the seawall at current estimate of fifty-three thousand, you're getting this additional art park and all the landscaping and everything that goes with that for an additional seventeen thousand dollars.
Right.
Kind of puts it in perspective.
Any other discussion? At this time, I'll open up for public input, public comment on this item. Is there anyone that would like to make public comment?
We put them all to...
Yeah, right. Turn, uh, back to council, I'm looking for a motion to, uh, accept a proposal for the donation of funding for improvements to Walsh Park and to amend the fiscal year 2018-19 budget, increasing fund 280 developer donations by seventy thousand dollars to undertake improvements to Walsh Park.
I'll make that.
Presented?
I'll make that as presented, yes, sorry.
Alderman.
I was gonna start reading a bunch of stuff, but no.
Second?
Second.
Alderman Devine? Discussion on this item. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Camden?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
No.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Sante?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve a variance, uh, for a corner side yard building setback requirement of six feet from fifteen feet to nine feet, uh, at 1503 Ramble Road. Doug, can you please present this item?
Thank you, Mayor Jett. Just one correction, the, the corner side yard setback is a six-foot protrusion, that is correct, and the normal setback is fifteen, however, this plat, the setback was twenty-five feet, so it's just going from twenty-five feet to nineteen feet on the corner side yard, everything else is the same, it's a, for a garage expansion in the corner side yard, and I'll be, uh, happy to answer any questions, and the applicants are in the audience, um, they're here, um, and they also are doing some, um, drainage improvements, I'll, I'll mention that as well, that's really not part of the request, but, um, I'll just mention it because it was discussed at the planning and zoning commission meeting.
Thank you. Discussion on this item, Alderman.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, my only reservations is we're doing a, a variance to build bigger and better in an area that has a significant drainage problem. Who at this desk was out there at the last heavy rain, uh, at that intersection and actually watched where the water was coming from, because there was a significant, I mean, significant amount of water that runs sheets across this whole property. I know I was out there because I kind of raged real, real hard, I go, I want to go out there because I want to see what's going on, and I don't know what, that the improvements they're talking about, I don't know if that's gonna actually be able to take care, take care of that, that sheet problem.
You know, I, I can let the applicant address it if, if you want to come to the podium, sir. I, I'll just say, it, it was brought up, playing is zoning commission, it's two hundred and sixty-four square feet, it, it, it is one of the larger lots, but I think the applicant, um, explained it better than I could saw.
You can just state your name for public record.
Hi, uh, Patty Bachlist, and this is Marty, my fiancé.
Marty Grandle. We live at 1503 North Ramble, and I can, the only thing I have to say about that is there is absolutely nothing that is gonna fix that water problem, other than a major overhaul of some system. I know they had talked about putting in a retention pond for Boom Creek on the other side, so it takes some of the water that way, um, I believe the city has bought the two lots across the street from us, um, that could be made into a retention pond, and I believe that had been talked about. But as far as the drainage that we're gonna put in is from, like, between the four yards in our back corner out to the street. So, when this big rain happens, eight hours later, all the water's gone, except for what's on our properties. So, the water that's there eight hours later is the water we were gonna drain to the ditch. But as far as stopping that thing from filling up, we take water from, uh, Angelo's parking lot, from, uh, North Side Street coming down, the West Side Street coming down, it all comes to us. We are asking for a twelve-by-twenty-two extension to our garage, only for some more storage, because I'd be afraid that if something happened, one of my sump pumps in the crawl space, everything would be toast.
Any other questions for that, then? May I have a seat? Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? We go to a public comment, is there anyone in the public that would like to make public comment on this item? See, now at this time, I'm looking for a motion, uh, on item eight B as presented.
Alderman Santi?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Second?
Alderman Devine?
Discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Sante?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Camden?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Congratulations, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for hanging out. Next item on the agenda is a motion, uh, is a discussion to an ordinance, uh, to approving, granting a conditional use permit to allow recreational institution, outdoor amusement, like Great America, restaurants serving alcohol, like Great America, live entertainment, dancing and outdoor seating with alcohol and food at 3002 West Illinois Route 120, VFW Post 4600. Doug, can you please present this item?
Thank you, Mayor Jett. This is, uh, for the VFW, they're doing everything they do now and they've always done, and this ordinance is exactly like it was in ninety-six when they, we annexed East of the River, except now they're going to be having outside seating, as you see in your application packet, and they're going to have people that go outside and eat and drink alcohol, which is gonna be... Thank you, Mayor Jett, this is for the VFW, they're doing everything they do now and they've always done, and this ordinance is exactly like it was in ninety-six, when they annexed East of the River, except now they're going to be having outside seating, as you see in your application packet, and they're going to have people that go outside and eat and drink alcohol, which is gonna be contained, so that's the reason for the additional conditional use, expanded conditional use, why they went to planning and zoning commission, they normally don't serve the alcohol outside, but I did exclude that, if they wanted to do that every now and then, they could do that, so that's why they're coming for you, Ben from the VFW is here, if you have any questions.
Discussion by council?
You're only doing the bathrooms and the bar area? This is phase one.
Okay. I try to bite up more than I can chew at this point.
Any parking lot repairs on the agenda?
HR Green has already started planning, I expect to have the blueprints, the engineering and the blueprints by the end of the month.
Excellent, I look forward to approving this.
Any other questions for Ben?
They adhere to the same music requirements, correct, if that...
They, they are gonna adhere to all the outdoor seating regulations, meaning they'll be done by ten o'clock.
Yeah, okay. So I have, look forward, and this is something, boy, this is, it's had to be like four or five managers ago, this was first, this was discussed, at least that far, great, let's see, move ahead.
Alderman Camden?
Just a clarification, so this would allow service of drinks and food outside?
It would, yes.
And also for outdoor entertainment, like a band or...
Yes, yes.
You know, I, obviously, there's been a lot, a little bit going on in the VFW, but even beyond all of that, just seeing the growth, and for those of us that, in the community that attended the VFW prior to all the recent craziness, just, I think it's a great addition for the community.
I should clarify, I think the recreational institution lends it because of the baseball fields, I think that's why that was put in there originally, so I just copied it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Alderman Schaefer?
Whenever they have outdoor events outside of this new area, they would still need to get a, like, when they have the baseball picnic and they have outdoor alcohol serving and stuff like that, that's still, this doesn't allow it to be done without the process they went through before.
Correct.
Yeah, everything with alcohol has to be within the area you have in front of you, if it's outside of that area, they would have to get a special use, or temporary use, I'm sorry, or liquor license, that type of thing, this is within that contained area.
All right, thank you. Any other discussions? This time, I'll open it up for public comment, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment? See none, I'm looking for a motion for eight C as presented. Alderman Santi?
I'll make a motion to the conditional use permit to allow recreation institution, outdoor amusement, restaurants serving alcohol, live entertainment, and dancing, outdoor seating with alcohol and food at 3002 West Illinois Route 120, the VFW Post 4600 as presented.
Second? Alderman Glad?
I'll second.
Any discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Sant?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Camden?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Here we're done. Thank you, Ben, go home and get some sleep now. Next item on the agenda, I'm looking for a motion to table to adopt an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to the existing annexation agreement for the Oaks of Irish Prairie dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand and five, relative to removal of the clubhouse, changes of architectural standards, and the reduction of impact fees. Alderman Curry?
So moved.
Second? Alderman Santi?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Sant?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Camden?
Yes.
Thank you, council, next item on the agenda is staff reports, is there any staff reports this evening?
Tomorrow morning at nine AM at Veterans Memorial Park, we'll have the nine eleven remembrance ceremony, that'll be, there'll be excellent speeches by the mayor and police chief, especially...
Brief, brief.
Brief. Fire chief.
Five seconds to me.
The fire chief will also be there, there'll be a combined color guard, as well as participation from the McKinner High School choir, who always does a nice job for us at that ceremony, and then, before we meet again on September twenty-second, the Rotary Club, Rotary Summit, I believe, will be having their Oktoberfest at Peterson Park on September twenty-second, again, at Peterson Park, so that should be a delightful report to also...
Thank you. Any other staff reports?
All right, mayor, city council comments, I'd like to give props to the police department for how good of a job they're doing in keeping the traffic under control as much as possible, you know, I definitely received a lot of calls and a lot of social media posts on what they've been doing, so props to the police department, the chief, great, great job. Another thing I'd like to mention is, obviously, I sent a text out to all of you on the passing of Kevin Blastina, owner of Old Bridge, my prayers go out to him and his family, his daughter that is flying in, I believe, now, but I just wanted to say that publicly, so, I have nothing else.
City council comments?
I'm sorry, I wanted to say something, but you all...
This is, this is mayor and city, I'm just saying.
I forgot, I lost my spot.
Go ahead, go ahead, Derek.
I'm the city administrator. I just wanted to say, I wanted to give some, some props, I guess I'll use the mayor's term, to Troy, you know, he's, Director Schmidt's been out for a couple of weeks now, and will probably be out for a couple more weeks, and Troy's been, been working his tail off over Public Works to keep it on track, along with the superintendents and Nicole, the office manager over there, so they've all been stepping up and doing a really great job, and on top of that, Troy's dealing with this regular stuff, which is the Pearl Lincoln Project, and the Green Street Bridge Project, and managing those and being out there on a day-to-day basis, Troy's out there, he's able to work with the public and the contractors on those projects to make sure that if there are issues, and there have been issues, are addressed in a timely manner, and the project can move along while we're satisfying the residents and businesses in the area, too, so, good job, Troy.
Good job. Alderman Schaefer?
On that same note, the nine eleven ceremony at the park is always something special, at least it has been for my family, but did you tell any of those contractors that we got a little ceremony going on for a little while tomorrow, because that's right in the midst of everything?
I had that conversation with the foreman of that crew this morning, so...
They get the morning off?
Well, they're doing some forework on that stretch, and I told them why I'm off that block at nine o'clock, they've got, their first pour of the day is at ten thirty, but they're gonna start further to the west, so they're in beyond sight, I believe their disruption to the ceremony will be as minimal as possible.
We invite that as well.
Yeah, our speeches will be very minimal as well.
No blasting that morning.
What's that?
No blasting that morning.
No, no. Any other city council comments? Alderman Curry?
This might be a little premature, but is the possible future intended item with the, as someone just recently said, the craziness that's been going on, it'll be, and I'll use your term, I'll give props to the police department as well, I think they've done an excellent job trying to manage and help manage the situation, but I think that, you know, I think it started getting really crazy when it hit about five million dollars, and I think that maybe, unless there's something else that comes up, that it would be something for us to consider, once this is done, dropping that limit from ten million back to five million.
You want me to comment on that?
No, no, just sit back, yeah, just sit back.
Just enjoy the props. I'll pick the props.
Any other city council comments? See none? At this time, I ask that Ms. May, please exit the room for executive session, and I'll ask for a motion to enter executive session.
For purchase or lease of her property?
For purchase or lease of real estate property by the city.
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
And then, Sandy?
Sandy.
Please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Sant?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Camden?
Yes.